The fifth day of the sixth special session of the 20th Congress will now come to order. May we all rise for a moment of silent prayer.
Senator Conman, Vice Speaker Moses, Senator Ned, Senator Panuelo, Senator Perman, Senator Romlo, Senator Osmal, Senator Wally, Speaker Semina.
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, 11 members are present.
We have corn to transact business, reading of the Journal, Florida Harbor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Move to dispense with the reading of the Journal.
Let's move and seconded that we dispense with the reading of the Journal. Those in favor say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. We now dispense with the reading of the Journal. Next item.
Item five, Presidential Communications, on receipt of number 20-365.
Okay, assign that, Chief Burke. Next item.
Item six, FSM Supreme Court Communications, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item seven, Member Communications, we have two, and their numbers 20-37 and 20-38.
Okay, assign those, Chief Burke. For your information, members, 20-37, that's the first report from the JCRB. So if you're interested, read that, it's with our secretaries. Okay, Chief Burke, continue.
Item eight, Departmental Communications, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Continue.
Item nine, Agency or Governmental Authority Communications, none. Item 10, State Communications, none. Item 11, State Supreme Court Communications, also none. Item 12, Municipal or Town Communications, none. Item 13, Foreign Government Communications, on receipt of one, and it's number 20-68.
Assign that, Chief Burke. Subject to call off the chair. Congress is back in session. Next item, Chief Burke. It's the order of the day.
Mrs. Speaker, please disregard the awaiting list, there's no reports.
Okay, disregard, there's no standing committee reports on the waiting list. Next item.
Item 15, Special Committee Reports, there are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
Item 16, Assignment Measures in Communications, we have a referral sheet, number 20-94.
Okay, Chairman and members, take a look at that for your planning purposes. Next item.
Item 17, Unfinished Business, none, Mrs. Speaker.
Okay. Next item, Bill Calendar, first bill.
Mrs. Speaker, pardon for the confusion on the bill calendar, but the first bill for action is Congressional Act number 20-139 for repassage from your Committee on J and Go.
Okay, Chairman.
Motion to pass the state bill.
It's move and seconded that Congress re-pass Congressional Act number 20-139. Chief Clerk, what is it?
Mrs. Speaker, Congressional Act number 20-139 is an act to amend Title 52 of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia, as annotated, as amended by adding a new section 212, to provide for eligibility for housing allowance for off-island recruits, for public service sector positions within the national government of the Federated States of Micronesia, and for other purposes.
Okay, there you have it. Any discussion?
Speaker.
Florida Harbor.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. After we divert this act yesterday, I went home and I was thinking over it again, and a saying came to my mind, which says, "We spend money to make money." So I know if we pass this, re-pass it, we will, of course, spend money because of the housing allowance to all employees who are qualified, but at the same time, I know we will also make money, as the money goes to the owner of the houses, will spend locally and through taxes and all that, they will come into our economy, and so we make money. Therefore, I would like to ask that we go ahead and re-pass this act at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Florida Harbor, for your wise thought on that. Any further discussion? If none, there's no objection, debate is closed. So let's forward by roll call of delegations. Conman, you'll cast, vote for Trump.
State of Trump, Chairman Conman.
Aye.
State of Pompe, Chairman Panuelo.
Speaker, our position from yesterday has remained the same. I trust it's going to go through, but sometimes a Pompe delegation would have to be sensitive to our other branch across. Thank you.
Okay.
State of Coshai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Figuere. Yes, thank you. Mrs. Speaker, three states voted for.
For that reason, Congressional Act number 20-139 is re-passed by Congress. The fee bill has been overreaded. Okay, next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CB number 20-260 for second reading. CB number 20-260 is a bill for an act to amend section 802, as created by Public Law number 18-34 of Title 25 of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia, as annotated, and as amended by adding a new subsection 3, to clarify responsibilities pertaining to climate change of successor agencies to OEM and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuere.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. A move for the passes of the bill on second and final reading.
It's move and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CP number 20-1260. Discussion, any discussion? If none, there is no objection, debate is closed. So let's forward by roll call of delegations. Chief Burke.
State of Trump, Chairman Conman.
Yes.
State of Pompe, Chairman Panuelo.
Aye, ma'am.
State of Coshai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Figuere. Mrs. Speaker, four states voted for.
CP number 20-260 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number 20-268 for second reading. CP number 20-268 is a bill for an act to further amend Public Law number 20-60, as amended by Public Laws numbers 20-65, 20-75, 20-85, and 20-97, by amending section 5 thereof, to change the use of funds previously appropriated therein, to fund public projects and social programs in the State of Trump, and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuere.
Thank you, Speaker. Move for the passes on second and final reading.
Second. Move and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CP number 20-268. Discussion, any discussion? If none, there's no objection, debate is closed. So let's forward by roll call of delegations.
State of Trump, Chairman Conman.
Aye.
State of Pompe, Chairman Panuelo. State of Coshai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Figuere. Mrs. Speaker, all the four states voted in favor.
CP number 20-268 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
Mrs. Speaker, we have CP number 20-258 for second reading. CP number 20-258 is a bill for an act to amend section 107 of Title 1 of the Code of the Federated States of Micronesia, as annotated, for the purpose of prohibiting discrimination based on sexual orientation and for other purposes.
Okay. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session, Chairman Romolo.
Motion for passes on said bill.
It's move and seconded that Congress pass on second and final reading, CP number 20-258. Read the title. Oh, you already did, okay. So there you have it. It's a simple bill, straightforward. Any discussion?
Question.
Question. It's been called for, there's no objection. You have discussions, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I just want to reiterate my position on this for the record, that I do not support this bill, as I don't want to be considered as an advocate of homosexuality. I know we're trying to imitate the other advanced countries, which support this kind of arrangement or relationship, but at the same time, I'm looking at the recommendation of the Vatican. You know, the Vatican is not really supporting this kind of relationship, therefore, I still maintain my position, not supporting this. And as I said yesterday, I believe in the Bible instead of the FSM Constitution. Thank you.
Speaker, maybe--
Thank you, Florida Harbor, for your statements.
Are we in the chair?
No, we're on record.
Oh, okay.
Okay. You want short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session, we're still on discussion of 258. Any further discussion? If none, there's no objection, question's been called for. So debate is closed. Let's forward by roll call of delegations. Chief Burke.
State of Trump, Chairman Conman.
I yield to my good colleague to my right, Chairman Colin, to cast a vote. Thank you.
Okay, Chairman Colin, you've been given the opportunity.
With respect to the opponent, I mean proponent on this, I stand sustained on this.
Okay, yes, the vote is yes.
Yes. State of Pompe, Chairman Panuelo.
Aye, ma'am.
State of Coshai, Chairman Wally. State of Yap, Chairman Figuere.
Of course, yes.
Mrs. Speaker, three states voted for, State of Coshai, no.
Well, that's understandable, Coshai is the most religious state in our country, so, okay. For that reason, CP number 20-258 has passed Congress on second and final reading. Next bill.
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Speaker, I-- Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Any other bill? Chief Clerk.
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Any bill to withdraw? If none, so let's go down to next item.
Item 19, Mrs. Speaker, Resolution Calendar, there are none.
Okay, any resolution to withdraw, place?
Short recess.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Chairman Perman, you have the floor.
Thank you, Speaker. Good morning to you, members, and all that are observing our session this morning. Mrs. Speaker, we'd like to make a motion to withdraw 20-151 and 20-152, congressional resolution, our business of today. So move.
Second. It's move and seconded that resolutions number 20-151 and 20-152 be withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Those in favor of the motion say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. Those two resolutions are now placed, withdrawn, and placed on the resolution calendar for action. First resolution, Chief Burke.
Mrs. Speaker, we have a Congressional Resolution number 20-151, or 151, for adoption. This is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of $250,000 from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, to support and fund FSM Department of Health and Social Affairs, OBOE, state targeted response project, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Okay, Chairman Perman.
Motion for adoption.
So move for its adoption. It's move and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number 20-151. Discussion.
Question.
Questions being called for. If there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's forward those in favor of the adoption of resolution number 20-151, say yes. Opposed no. Motion carried. Resolution number 20-151 is adopted by Congress. Next resolution.
Mrs. Speaker, the next resolution is CR number 20-152 for adoption. CR number 20-152 is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of $108,197 from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, to fund the FSM preventive health and health services project, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Okay, Chairman Perman.
So move for its adoption. It's move and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number 20-152. Discussion.
Chairman Figuere, you have the floor.
What is the point of your information? What is the preventive health?
Okay, good question. What is preventive health?
Health prevention.
Perhaps that money should stay in the U.S. Same as the other one, I think we need the mental health assistance here, I think they need that more. So, all right.
Well, I think these two combat and prevent undesirable sexual orientation, you know, those kind of things. Any further comments, Chairman Perman?
Well, it's very in simple, it says health prevention, and what else do you want me to say? You want me to say it in my own language?
Well, I don't know, Speaker, but yeah, it's always been my position that I think we just get this fund from our friends, and there's really no improvement. Year in, year out, we get these grants, but if we are really serious in using the funds to each max, reach its purposes and goal, we shouldn't be using them anymore, because there's no more disease spreading in our country. But I think we'll just use it, because we're used to--
Speaker, two handouts.
Thank you. Are we in recess?
Thank you. No, we're in session. Chairman Colin.
It's okay, Speaker. I was about to say something in recess, but--
Okay, short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session, we're still on discussion of resolution 20-152. Any further discussion? If none, and there's no objection, debate is closed. So let's forward those in favor of the adoption of resolution number 20-152, say yes. Opposed nay. Motion carried. Resolution number 20-152 is adopted by Congress. Next resolution, Chief Burke.
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session. Chairman Figuere, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to withdraw and place congressional resolution number 20-153 on the resolution calendar for action.
It's move and seconded that resolution number 20-153 be withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Those in favor of that motion say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. Resolution number 20-153 has been withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Chairman Figuere.
Move for the adoption of this resolution.
And second, it's move and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number 20-153. Discussion.
Can we read the--
Read the title, Chief Burke.
Mrs. Speaker, Congressional Resolution number 20-153 is a resolution approving and accepting a grant in the amount of $500,000 from the United States Department of Interior, Office of Insulin Affairs, to fund the FSM single audit for fiscal year 2018, as required under the amended compact, including all the terms and conditions of the assistance.
Okay, there you have it. Speaker, yes, Florida Harbor.
Yeah, can someone educate me as to what is single audit?
What is single audit? Chairman Figuere.
I don't know. I'm not an auditor. I don't even--
Of course, single audit is our audit for the entire national government, it happens every year, so it is necessary for us in order to continue, you know, our accountability and transparency, that's--
Speaker, is it done every year, or every time the Office of Auditor wants to do it?
Every year. This one is required under the compact of resolution.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I support it, but, you know, during the oversight hearing that was chaired by Senator Romolo, we kind of learned that the audits these days are beginning to be very political.
Well, those other audits are different, they're funded under our regular, their regular budgets, but this one is needed for compact funding. We need to do it every time. Okay, any further discussion? If none--
Speaker.
Speaker. Yes, Chairman Romolo.
So you, when you mentioned that it's only for our compact funding, so they only audit the funds that related to our compact, not our locally--
No, it's for our entire government operations, our funding, compact, including local revenue, but it's for, not for specific programs like the public projects, that's not for it. Okay, any other discussion? If none, there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's forward those in favor of the adoption of resolution number 20-153, say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. Resolution number 20-153 is adopted by Congress. Next resolution.
Speaker.
Vice Chairman Ned.
Thank you, Speaker. I shall move to withdraw and place on today's calendar for action, resolution number 20-156.
Second. It's move and seconded that resolution number 20-156 be withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Those in favor of that motion say yes. Opposed no. Motion carried. Said resolution is now withdrawn and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Motion for adoption. Senator Ned.
Thank you, Speaker. I shall move for the adoption of the said resolution.
Second. It's move and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number 20-156. Chief Clerk, read the title.
Mrs. Speaker, Congressional Resolution number 20-156, it's a resolution approving and accepting grants in the amounts of $200,000 and $100,000 from the Global Environmental Facility, or GEF, through the United Nations Environment Program, to fund a project entitled "Support to Preparation of the Interim National Report on the Implementation of the Nakoya Protocol in the Federated States of Micronesia, and Support to Produce the Sixth National Report to the Convention on Biological Diversity, Including the Terms and Conditions of the Assistance."
Okay, there you have it. Discussion, any question? Questions being called for. If there's no objection, debate is closed. So let's forward those in favor of the adoption of resolution number 20-156, say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. Resolution number 20-156 is adopted by Congress. Next resolution. Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress back in session. Senator Ned, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Speaker. I shall move for the withdrawal and placement of resolution 20-146 for action.
Seven. It's move and seconded that resolution number 20-146 be withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Those in favor of that motion say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. Resolution number 20-146 is withdrawn from committee and placed on the resolution calendar for action. Senator Ned.
Thank you, Speaker. I can move for resolution 20-146 to be adopted by this Congress.
Seven. It's move and seconded that Congress adopt resolution number 20-146. Discussion.
Question.
Questions being called for. If there's no objection, discussion is closed. So let's forward those in favor of the adoption of resolution number 20-146, say yes, opposed no. Motion carried. Resolution number 20-146 is adopted by Congress. Next resolution.
There are none, Mrs. Speaker.
Short recess, subject to call of the chair. Congress is back in session, we're still on the resolution calendar. Any more resolution? If none, let's go down to the next item. Chief Burke.
Item 20, Mrs. Speaker, introduction of bills and resolutions.
Okay, if you have any measure to introduce, please pass them on to Chief Burke. Next item.
Mrs. Speaker, for item 21, I beg your pardon, member communication number 20-37 should be labeled "Miscellaneous Communication 20-37," so we do have one, and it's that from Mr. Asteria Takasi.
Okay, for those who are interested in the JCRB's works, that's the first report from the JCRB-- from the JCRB. Read it when you have time. And I think they mentioned there are two more reports forthcoming. So read them, in case you're wondering what JCRB's been doing. Okay? Okay, miscellaneous business?
Speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who's that? Oh. Chairman Perman, you have--
We're under miscellaneous business?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. Speaker, I just want to raise some concern of mine, maybe a little bit of disappointment. For the record, I voted for the housing. I voted yes to the housing. And yesterday, we decided not to act on the seven percent salary increase according to term of Ways and Means. He said, "We need to make money to keep money." And Flor today, he said, "Let's pass this because we need to help these people out with housing." And at the same time, the business, the owners of those housing also will earn money. We deferred the seven percent increase because we, we need to look if there's money. Today, when we pass the second reading, it's the same thing. We're taking care of only a few people. This seven percent increase will take care of the entire. Maybe some members will think that we're doing this because election is coming, but it is not for the record. I'm doing this. It's the New Year's Eve. It's been overdue, and I believe there's money around for us to take care of our employees of this government. So my disappointment is if there's no money, I was hoping that if we have to find money, we need to put it on the side and wait till we find money. But this morning, I found out that there's money around because we just voted yes to that bill. Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Perman. Of course, you can put it back in next session if you feel strongly about it. And keep working with Chairman Figuer on the money side of things. It's true what Florida there said. I mean, this money we give to these people, they spend it in our economies, salaries, applies to taxes, which we collect. So it just circulates in the economy and makes the economy stronger. Okay? Any other miscellaneous business? Okay, if none, I just want to take this opportunity to thank all members, all of you, for coming to this special session. It's a short, noticed one, but thank all of you for joining us. And please, I want us to continue to remember our two colleagues in our prayers while they're still away for medical reasons. And, you know, we have to acknowledge the works of some of our staff, especially the journal clerk and journal proofreader, for their work. Right now, we're kind of updated on our journals. They're working extra hard to do that. And of course, we also have to thank our, all of our staff, the Chief Clerk's office, Assistant Chief Clerk, and our legal staff for all the good work they've done on behalf of Congress. We couldn't be where we are if they're not doing their job. So our thanks go out to them. And I thank you for supporting one of the bills wherein we exempt some of our staff in order to make them more, you know, incentivize their staying with us, or to continue to work extra hard for, to make our works better. And for that, I'll turn it back to you. You have any other miscellaneous business? If none, let's go down to announcements. Chairman Wali.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. There is no announcement from your committee on itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Figuer. Okay, Vice Chairman Net. Chairman Perman.
Your committee HSA has no announcement, but just point of information, is our sergeant at arm here today?
Yes, he's going around looking for stuff. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Chairman Perman. Chairman Romano. Okay, Chairman Panuolo.
Speaker, your committee on RND, which is wishes to share with the members of RND Committee and other members who are willing to join the committee, and as I have requested and approved by you, Speaker, our committee is visiting Kosai next week, late next week up to early following week, to do some meetings with the leadership, and we're coordinating that already with the Kosai leadership on the fisheries. Your committee visited tour the Taiyang processing, and I just received some briefing from our NORMA office that in terms of economic opportunities, it is quite, quite good with what they will be doing there and employment issues. We will also take the opportunity to meet with the Kosai tourism industry and along with Chairman Wali, who I've met with on fisheries-related matters. So just sharing this information in the event that members wish to join your committee on these meetings. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Chairman Panuolo. I applaud you for doing that, especially for our state of Kosai. We need to support their activities, economic and otherwise, because we need to keep Kosai, you know, moving, growing in terms of its economic activities. So whatever we can do to help from Congress, I would appreciate. So please work closely with our delegation from Kosai for that. Okay? Chairman Coleman.
Thank you very much, Speaker. Special announcement to the delegation for the YAP. The H-1 will depart today at 2:00 P.M. Thank you very much.
I thought Chairman Figuer said that we can use it as long as we want in trip.
We tried to exchange, sent Chief Minot to YAP, and then we retained the H-1 to service into the Laku in Chuk.
Okay, thank you. He didn't listen. He's not listening, so don't worry. He's not. Okay, Senator Coleman.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Speaker. I have no announcement.
Okay. Vice Speaker, you have the last word, and you can make all the motions, in-house motions for us.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I have no announcements, but I just wanted to thank you and members for, it appears that we've exhausted all efforts in what was presented in Congress, so thank you for that. Thank members, staff, and everyone else who support us while we work. And with that, I would like to ask that you, myself and Flor Leader, read the journals and make the necessary adjustments.
Okay. It's moved and seconded that the presiding officers be authorized to review and approve all the relevant documents, records, journals for our sixth special session. Those in favor of that motion, say yes. Abols no. Motion carried. So be it. All right? And before we give to Vice Speaker to make a motion for a German sign of die, I just want to announce that yesterday, the ISO Nanken of Medellinum came and visited, visited Speaker, and he gave the Speaker the title of Luke Dolan Medellinum. So every time you see me, you call me by my title, okay? All right.
Okay, Speaker, I'm sorry, Luke, and thank you for the successful steering of our session, this special session. Kalanga, Luke.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Vice Speaker Moses, make your motion.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker, Luke Dolan Medellinum, I move that we, that this Congress adjourns sign of die.
Second. It's moved and seconded that Congress adjourns sign of die. Those in favor of the motion, say yes. Abols nay. Let's all stand. The motion is carried. The sixth special session of the twentieth Congress is now adjourned, sign of die.